Good afternoon. Call to order, the Hennings, Santa Barbara City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, March 15th, 2012 to order. I'm Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz, absent. Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Campanella.
Here.
Commissioner Bartlet.
Here.
Vice Chair Jordan, absent. Chair Lodge.
Here. Brings us to preliminary matters, and the first is action on review of the following minutes and resolutions, the draft minutes of February 16th, 2012, and the draft minutes of March 1st, 2012. Any additions, corrections, deletions? Not emotional.
Move to approve the minutes from February 16th and March 1st.
Second, and under discussion. I have my light on.
Commissioner Bartlet?
On page four of the minutes for February 16th, at the vote, at the very end, it lists myself and Commissioner Schwartz as being absent, yet we were at the meeting, and there's no reference earlier in the minutes that we left, so I believe we were present for that. Maybe you can check the record.
All right, anything else on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes for those two meetings are approved. Next is, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items? Ms. DeBusschere?
There are none.
Thank you. Any announcements or appeals?
None.
Any one, any requests from the public to make comments on items not on today's agenda? Not seeing anyone come forward, I will close that part of the meeting. And we go on to item three, concept review, application of Jessica Grant, agent for the City of Santa Barbara Public Works Department, Zero Hundred Block of East Cabrillo Boulevard, and general plan designation, well, HRC One and SD dash three zones, general plan designation, parks and open space. Ms. Grant, or Mr. Grant.
Okay, actually, Ms. Grant is going to be presenting as well, but I'm going to start off. My name is Rob Dayton with Public Works Department, and good afternoon, Madam Chair, Planning Commissioners. We're here, actually pretty excited to be here, about the Cabrillo Beachway relocation and the possibility of doing that. I want to give you a little bit of background about the beachway, because it was installed quite some time ago, I believe in the 60s, one of you probably knows better than me.
In the 70s.
In the 70s, okay, there you have it. And it used to be, the reason it was installed was because the grand sidewalk, if you will, on Cabrillo Boulevard was attracting all users, cyclists, at that time, the roller skates with four wheels on a boot. And so what happened was, they put in the beachway, at that time it was called a bike path, and that was done closer to the ocean, but the thing that happened that everyone was kind of surprised at, because we were finally going to separate the bikes and the wheeled vehicles from pedestrians, is the pedestrians actually went over to the beachway too. So here we're going to talk about the beachway and its multiple users. We like to say it's been plagued by its success, it's very successful, people love to use it, but because there's so many different users on the beachway, we do have some conflicts. And just looking at some of the users, we have on this slide, you can see the Land Shark, this location that the Land Shark has stopped at, actually the Mission Creek Bridge, over the Cabrillo is on. There's many other trolleys, buses that stop here, lot of pedestrians gathering there. You're all familiar with the Sunday Art Show, and how attractive, what an asset that is for our city, and the multiple users there. And then you have the beachway in this area, and many, many different users, you've got bicyclists, joggers, we have the quadricycles. There are many different types of actually vehicles you can rent, three-wheel, four-wheel, two-wheel, then skateboarders, rollerbladers, so, and then walkers. So you have many, many different users on this pathway. And then what's unusual about the beachway in this location is it narrows, it's mainly separated by the Chase Palm Park Strip all the way along the beach, but then at this location, at Mission Creek, the beachway comes into and goes alongside the sidewalk. About 1997, when council actually had a goal, remember, does anyone remember council goals? But there was a council goal to solve this conundrum of pedestrians on the beachway. Is there a way we can possibly get pedestrians to not walk on it? That's been a very challenging task, but one of the things that they identified is this area that you're looking at now, where the beachway comes in close to Cabrillo Boulevard. They said, this is the area of most conflict. And on the other side of this, where the wharf is, at the mouth of the wharf, where the beachway crosses the mouth of the wharf, also another point of conflict. And you can see, right here across the bridge, the sidewalk is right, right here on the, right here, and then you have all the users, but look at the pedestrians, right, right here, walking with the cyclists. Same thing over here, this one is during the art show, even people gathering on the, what was the bikeway, now the beachway, kind of acknowledging there's multiple users, all these pedestrians right on the beachway. Well, this, this causes quite a conflict, because as cyclists are coming down this path, and they, there's many, many cyclists and rollerbladers coming in this location in particular, the pedestrians are not aware or cognizant that they are on a road. And so what happens is, and I've done this, I'm sure you have, as a pedestrian, you're not thinking about, okay, I'm on a road, and if I turn this way, there's going to be a bike there, and so you just do it, and then the bike's there, and you know, what ends up happening nine times out of 10 is it's the cyclist who gets hurt. I don't know how that happens, but the pedestrian, you know, I guess they veer out of the way and crash, but the safety concerns are with this conflict between pedestrians and the bicycles. So what that group in 1997 recommended, and they were from, they were people from all over California, different beach communities that have paths in their communities, so they did have a little bit of understanding, is what they said is, you have to separate, you have to get the beachway and move it away. You've got to move it away from the sidewalk, because what's happening is, if people are on the sidewalk, right here, and then they get on the beachway and they make a beeline for the wharf, because that's kind of where they're going. Or maybe they're coming off the wharf, and they do the opposite. Or maybe they're going to the skate park, and they're just going to take a nice walk, and they're like, oh, well, this is closer to the water, let's just take the beachway. So what they said is, they said, you've got to separate these uses. You're not going to eliminate walking on the beachway, but you'll go really far to lessening the number of people who walk on the beachway. So you may be aware, actually it came to you, if you were on the planning commission then, we, we had the Mission Creek Cabrillo Boulevard Bridge, that replacement, this bridge right here, has got to be replaced, and Jessica's going to tell you more about that. But because that's happening, that's been improved, as a part of that project, there is actually a temporary bridge for the beachway that's proposed to be out here. So we just saw that, wow, this is a great opportunity. Looking at that report, what if we could make that temporary bridge the permanent bridge, and not spend the money to bring it back to the one that we're building, and keep that separation? One of the other things that is the art walk, if you look down here, the art, the art walk on Sundays, they actually cater to the path right here, and you're posted, the path actually cuts down the middle of their space, so people are actually standing, looking at art, so you can tell that if we move that, that would open up the space for the art exhibitors there, and then, again, keep the roadway out of the pedestrian, where the pedestrians are gathering. So that's just setting the stage for you to see why would we would do this, and I'm going to hand over to Ms. Grant to tell you the particulars of it and how it would be done.
Ms. Grant?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. And now that Mr. Dayton has told us the why, I'm here to tell you the how we could possibly get this done. And so, as Rob mentioned, the Cabrillo Boulevard Bridge is set to be replaced. Now, at the current timeline, we're trying to gear up for construction of spring or summer of 2013. Sitting next to me is Bobby Salvini. She is the project manager for the Cabrillo Bridge Replacement Project. So Rob and I have been working very closely with her, because we understand that the Cabrillo Bridge Replacement Project has a very, we do not want to jeopardize any of the timeframe for this project, because we may jeopardize grant funding, and that is not our goal. But we did see this as an opportunity to say, well, maybe, since this is under construction, and there is a temporary bridge that's a part of the pieces for the construction for the Cabrillo Bridge Replacement Project, is, well, why not have that as an opportunity, synergy, to make that a permanent bridge, that would help solve the circulation issues that are happening? So what that means, if we were to proceed, and planning commission is open to allowing us analyze this concept, is because it was a temporary, so this is how the, the bridge plans look, and this, all the, all the project has received coastal development permits from the Coastal Commission, and stream bed alterations from the Department of Fish and Game, and Army Corps permits, and all of that, so all of it's been permitted. But there is the possibility to try and seek addendums to those permits. And so what that would look like is, for future analysis, is that we would need to study the biological, if there's any biological impacts of having a bridge at this location, if there's, because there was, and there was cultural resource studies that were done as well, and we want to make sure that we're still in concert with those reports. And, and if we, and also, because the Lower Mission Creek, this is, there's the larger Lower Mission Creek Full Control Project that's going on, that you're aware of, that will be making permits basically from the ocean all the way up to Cannon Perdido Street, where the design flood is 3,400 cubic feet per second, so this bridge also needs to pass that amount, and if it was a, a permanent pedestrian bridge, it would also need to meet the hydraulic specifications as well. So those would be the three key reports that we would need to look at in analysis. And then, once we determine what the findings would be, then we would submit for formal applications, which would be in the form of, hopefully for addendums to existing permits. So it would be an addendum, the California Coastal Commission, because we're in their jurisdiction, right at this location, they would call it an immaterial amendment that we would need to be processed, and the rest of them, for the Department of Fish and Game, is just an amendment to their stream bed alteration agreement, same with Army Corps, same with the Regional Water Control Board. We'd also need to have, for the city local review, planning commission recommendation to the Coastal Commission, and Historic Landmarks Commission review, and because this is also parks property, waterfront property in this area, we'd want to visit those boards as well. As far as for a process, if we were to move forward on this, I would say it's right about a nine-month process, if we were to hit it aggressively, and hopefully be in line, again, with the Cabrillo Boulevard Beach, I'm sorry, Bridge Replacement.
Thanks.
And so that, what we request for you today is, what we're hoping is to agree the need and opportunity to relocate the beachway alignment next to Cabrillo Boulevard Bridge over Mission Creek, and initiate the process of permanently relocating the beachway bridge to the approved temporary location. With that, conclude our presentation, and be happy to entertain any questions, comments.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Questions for staff? Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, currently, the plans that are approved would include both retaining the current walkway that goes across the bridge, and then there's the temporary. So our approvals being sought for both currently, relative to construction, and is the temporary bridge of the same character and nature that a permanent bridge would be. In other words, what's being designed right now could also serve permanently.
Ms. Grant?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campanella, right now, we would like to proceed to the Historic Landmarks Commission for the full look of the bridge, what they'd want to see. It's something, and intention, that if we were to do a permanent bridge, that, because we have the opportunity to leverage federal funds, the Cabrillo Boulevard Bridge Replacement Project is being funded by the highway, Federal Highway Bridge Program. So I think it's our intent to not have this grandiose beachway. It would be something, sort of what we would maybe see is the proposed beachway that's now connected, actually, maybe let me go here. So the pros, that's the approved beachway location in the orange color, you know, it might, it may be a simple, but we would also request feedback from the Historic Landmarks Commission, is just to shift that section of the bridge over. So this bridge is actually not a free-span bridge, it does have center supports, and so that, if we made it a permanent bridge, we'd likely see center support as well, that would give us a little bit of flexibility to maybe have some permanent utility locations underneath that bridge.
Commissioner Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our site visit on Tuesday, what I thought I heard was the, the idea of trying to incorporate utilities under the now temporary, but proposed to be permanent, bridge, because the current, the orange area that would be going away with this proposal currently supports, you know, the gas line, and maybe there's other lines that we're not seeing there, but the idea would be perhaps those could either be incorporated into the new permanent beachway and/or be put under the narrowed bridge deck for the street? Is that the assumption, then?
Ms. Grant?
Yes. Chair Lodge, Commissioner Bartlet, that's something that we will look at for analysis, yes, as part of the bridge replacement project right now, there would be a temporary relocation of those utilities to the temporary beachway, we'd sort of lay it on top of the beachway bridge for a certain section, but we would look to make it so we could maybe do a permanent relocation of the utilities underneath that beachway.
And then we also had discussion that if it's possible without slowing down or getting in the way of the project, or perhaps even sleeve to accommodate the dredge line that is separate at this point?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Bartlet, we, it's definitely under analysis, and we hope to, if we do proceed with looking into this concept, we do need to work really closely with the waterfront and Parks Department. Also, oh, and we're, this, just to let, let's see if I can get the aerial, so this is the dredge, oh, where's my, there we go. This is the dredge pipe that, that you're discussing. One of the things from the Parks Department point of view, and part of our, the Cabrillo Bridge Replacement in the Lower Mission Creek Full Control Project, is this, this whole area, if you see where the mouse is going, if you follow right around this whole area, is we're required to do restoration, lagoon restoration. And again, going on the north side of the bank, this is following the arrow, that will be all lagoon restoration. And so with the dredging operations, they come in, there's a contract every three years, and if we plant a lot of, try to restore and deal the lagoon restoration, we have to build either the restoration plans with the flexibility, which actually are incorporated right now, of that pipe being located more or less within, like, I think it's 15 feet on either, where the pipe can be laid, but again, we'd work with the waterfront to maybe look at a sleeve for the bridge, and, or other types of things that we haven't thought of yet, or if we'd like to analyze more, so part of the discussion.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Comments? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak to this subject?
Yeah. We currently own a property from State Street, Long Hill Boulevard, where Rustus is and where the bridge is going to be. We waited many years now, as you know, for this to happen, and it's, it's been very difficult waiting such a long time.
It has.
I think this sounds like a splendid idea, but I like it very much, but I'm hoping that it's not going to interfere, A, with the progress of what we've already done and spent, I don't know how many years, four or five, getting all of these permits. The second thing is the cost, and whether that cost would be so great that it will take money away from the bridge project. The bridge project has lasted so long.
That it's used up a lot of money already, so those are the two questions I have. Okay, thank you, Ms. Castignola. Is, is there someone on the staff who can respond to these issues that Ms. Castignola raised?
Madam Chair, Scott Redman, waterfront director. Call Tribe, our facilities manager and I are here today, just to let you know that waterfront has been working with these folks on this project, and we're supportive of combining the dredge pipe with the bridge, if it can be practically done. Just want to let you know, we're in, we're in the loop on that.
Thank you, good, thank you, Mr. Redman. Ms. Grant?
Yeah, Chair Lodge, I think Bobby Salvini would like to respond to the cost issue and the timeline issue with the Cabrillo Boulevard. and the timeline issue with the Cabrillo Boulevard Replacement Project.
All right. And I would like to ask you to include in your response reference to a project relating to the creek and the emancipation, which the Planning Commission approved a year, year and a half ago, and how that ties in.
Okay, Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you.
Please identify yourself for the record.
I'm sorry, Bobby Salvini, I'm the deputy, I'm sorry, I'm the Public Works Department. I'm one of the principal engineers and project manager for the Cabrillo Bridge Project. One of the options is to, as Jessica Grant pointed out, is to move the current bridge over to the new location. Financially, this is the modifications that would have to be done to segregate those, to create a space between them, for example, an additional railing could be absorbed in the contract with the cost of the temporary bridge location. The other advantage of this is that when we relocate the utilities temporarily to the, what's currently designed as the proposed temporary bridge location, we could leave those utilities there, so we would save in those costs. And that would help us to be able to pay for those additional expenditures. Additionally, we already have permits for the temporary bridge location, so some of the analysis has already been done at those locations. So we felt that we had the best opportunity to be able to get the discretion, the approval from the resource agencies at that location. The other advantage to this is we have a 16-inch gas main and a large diameter water line, and then another smaller diameter, diameter, local water line that provides the services to the businesses along this corridor. And those facilities need to be maintained from the edge of the bridge. We can't go put scaffolding under the bridge because it's wet under the bridge. So this gives us an opportunity to have four edges of the bridges essentially, where we could put a cherry picker on the bridge and then be able to access the utilities from the bridge top. So that gives us an opportunity to install an additional utility, which would, could be the dredge pipeline. The maximum size that we could support on this type of bridge, hydraulically, we need the clearance under the bridge, and additionally, structurally, would be a 24-inch facility. And with respect to timing, as Ms. Grant pointed out, we really have to stay on a very tight schedule to get this forward. One of the issues that was brought up with the challenge of this is that we cannot afford to have the project delay anymore. The Caltrans, that's funding the majority of the costs of this project, they have already told us that if there's further delays, they will be putting us in at the pool to recompete for the funding. So we really have to have something that can move along very quickly if we're going to take this opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Castignola, before you leave, would you please fill out a speaker's request to speak form there in the back of the room? Ms. Larson, Commissioner Larson?
Are you ready for comments? Comments? You asked for comments.
Well, I thought, okay.
Okay. So I'll start. I think, I think being plagued by success is a happy place to be, but it can be a pain. But in my walking on the roadway, as I'm going to now call it, I have encountered lots of people, seniors principally, who are so grateful for the opportunity to walk in sand without being in sand. So just so you know, that there is a cadre of pedestrian activity down there grateful for, for the, what they consider the opportunity to walk in nature, although they, they can't physically do it anymore. So that's just one thing that, you know, as we're returning use to only wheeled vehicles, you know, it's, we can't ignore those who treasure that. And not everybody wants to walk through, especially local people, the art show all the time on the weekend, and that's the only time they have available to go. So these are things to consider, because people will use it anyway. And I'm looking forward to HLC working on the design of the bridge, and I applaud the inclusion of the dredge pipe and any utilities within the bridge infrastructure instead of having it exposed. Although there is a certain funkiness about that drill pipe being down there that sort of has that Monterey Bay old historic feel, and I hope that drill pipe isn't 50 years old. So, but anyway, it would be, I think it would really enhance the area. Been looking forward to the restoration as well. So I actually thought it'd be done by now, because we're so lucky to have the funding and the permits done. You know, we need to, we do need to move ahead before it goes away. So those are, those are my comments. I think, I think that it's going to be wishful thinking that we eliminate pedestrians. They'll figure out a way to get on there, I promise you. I think it's just lucky we don't have the skateboarders there as well. So, you know, it is, it is, we're crowned, we're crowned with the, oh, God, my mother used to have a phrase for it. It's, it's like the burden of your own success. Now you prayed for a tax problem, now you got it. Hope you're happy. So here, here we want people walking, we got it. Too bad we can't be happy. Too bad that everybody can't, can't use it. But I understand about the bicycling. So thank you very much.
Any other comments? Commissioner Campanella?
Yes, it's, I don't really go down there on a Sunday, but I did this past Sunday and just observed, and I spoke to a couple of the artists that were primarily in the area to the left, which is near the restrooms, if you will, with the pathway that currently runs, there you go, yeah, that pathway. And they were, I showed them just an example of what was being considered to get their input, and they, they liked the idea of the temporary bridge way there being the access, because then their sites where they are displaying wouldn't be cut up. Because right now, people, bikes, everything comes right down the middle. And those that don't have a permanent stand but are still paying fees to display are on both sides of the current bikeway. So eliminating that section, they felt favorable about, because then it would be easier for people to just walk around without worry about being hit. A question would be on the, on the other connection, the current bike path to the bridge. Is that, in yellow, is that section going to stay as proposed? And the reason that that would go away, I guess I question as, and I'd like a response, because I think one thing we might be dealing with is volume. And, you know, we had, I just saw, local news said there was a 6% increase in tourism this past year. And I would guess the more, the more ways you could get people to Cabrillo, I think might be the better, rather than eliminating that particular portion, at least that gives some people a chance to walk out while other people can go over the bridge. And as we saw from one of your shots, people, I would think pedestrians would sort of stay on the bridge for a while, because of the rail. I was down there today, some lady was taking photographs of the ducks, you know, people with their kids maybe just resting over the rail, looking at the birds from both sides. So I'm just offering a suggestion that maybe that one leg stay in to maybe handle the volume as it increases in the future.
Commissioner Campanella, just so we're
Mr. Dayton?
You're clear about which is, what's staying, and what we're proposing, at least at this time, is where it says removed, so would be, would be gone. So if you see this bridge rail, the little shadow here, everything to the ocean side of that wouldn't be there. And just to let you know, this sidewalk right here is really generous. I forget the width, but I want to say 16 feet. It's, it's either 14 or 16 feet, super generous sidewalk. So we feel like we have the, we have the capacity in, in concrete, even with moving that for the pedestrians who would still want to be on that bridge. The other thing that, to point out is, you know how people, they want to be looking over the railing at the water? Well, actually, this will give the sidewalk the waterfrontage. So with that bridge removed, pedestrians on the sidewalk will actually be able to lean against the rail and look down into the water, whereas now they're not, and they have to go on the beachway bridge to do that. So I think a lot of the things that you're, you're wanting to keep will actually be enhanced with this proposal.
What you're saying, then, actually, there'll be three vantage points, potentially.
Exactly.
One, where the current bridge is, as truncated back. The other one would be from both sides of the new bridge that's out there. And if, that, which is great. And then you're pointing, if you will, where you were pointing to the area, we have a lot of concrete.
Right there?
Yeah, further, further northeast, if you will.
Northeast, so.
Yeah.
These, these wings right here?
Sorry, pardon me. There you go. Okay, that's the section that I'm talking about. Would that remain, or is that being taken out?
That, that is proposed to not be there. There is another path that does the same thing right down here. So if you were a pedestrian and you really wanted to get over there, you would take this path, and then that has a separate sidewalk that goes in front of Skaters' Paradise that's exclusively for pedestrians and hopefully people carrying their skateboards.
Okay.
But that, that's the provision. So we, we are proposing that this would be eliminated, so you, you get less people who are just naturally, this, this creates kind of a natural flow for the pedestrians the way it's designed now. It almost draws you in versus describing a, a road versus a, a walkway. And, and we get it, you know, Commissioner Larson, we, we're not pretending here that this is the panacea solution, and, you know, seniors certainly who want to be on the, on the sand, so to speak, will still do it. We're confident in that. We just feel like at these key points where pedestrians are making right angle decisions and movements, we feel like it's going to be a lot safer and provide the pathways for them to get there if they really want to continue to do it.
Well, why I question it is because when you got to the purple of the bridge, you either can go over the bridge or you walk over the lawn. And we also, there are things like the Surrys, for example, and people from out of town. My suggestion was to keep that one leg there. So if somebody wanted to get onto Cabrillo and bring their Surrey back or look at the art, they can and didn't have to go over the bridge. So that, that gave them two options. And that's with the volume and traffic that you might have on the actual beachway heading down to East Beach and coming back. I thought an option might be something that could be considered due to the volume increase. Thank you.
You know, if you forward this, we'll go ahead and consider that, and look at that, and see how that works in the flow. I, I don't know if any of our team members have quite considered that, but I think you're, you know, being that the Surrey place is right here, this is one of the rental places, not that it will be there forever, but because it's right there, you know, I think you've got a point, and we need to look at how that works.
I just want to make a comment on the increasing tourism. It's true, it's going up. I think for the last 19 months, there's been a steady increase in transient occupancy tax revenues. However, it's still not back up to what it was. So we have, I think we have some room there. Commissioner Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm grateful that Rob Dayton, at least, is one of the continuing members from all the great work that started in 1998, and able to kind of refresh our memories as to, you know, how you came to these decisions. This is one of those rare projects, I think, where it's really win-win all the way around. I mean, I see a real advantage to narrowing the bridge deck for the street. You know, that's going to greatly improve the habitat below the bridge deck. I know that's been the, the attempt that we've been making on other recent bridge projects, so I think that's a real benefit. I think as you remove the beachway portion that's currently attached to that, it would be nice, you know, when it goes back to landmarks, to look for opportunities to create those pedestrian overlooks for what is now truly the sidewalk, and put those there rather than encouraging those on the new beachway. I think the, the other benefit is that I think it's going to greatly enhance the creek restoration efforts for the landscape. We're going to have much less concrete in that zone, and hopefully we won't have the utilities, especially related to the dredge, that are coming in and out, destroying that restoration effort. I think the fact that it, if we act on it now, that there will be no delay and no extra cost, and we can, you know, save and use the efficiency of moving those utilities once and put the money we're saving there into a permanent bridge, I think is a real benefit. I think, obviously, one of the real drivers is safety of trying to keep the pedestrians and the beachway users separated. I think this goes a long way to that. I think it makes it better for the art show participants. And I think it also adds more capability for future utilities crossing the bridges. So, I mean, everything seems positive with this, so I'm certainly supportive, and I'm glad you came forward now, and hopefully we can dovetail these efforts so that we're not delaying the project at all. And I think it's going to be a better scenario. So those would be my comments.
Anyone, anyone else with comments? Commissioner Thompson?
Well, I wouldn't add anything more to what's already been said. I agree with it. I, I think it's a good time to come forward with this. It's just too bad that we didn't think about it earlier. My only caution is that we don't delay the basic project, which is to replace the deficient bridge. So it's a good idea to do this, but let's not let it get in the way of replacing the bridge.
Well, I agree with the comments, particularly the Commissioner Bartlet made. This really is a win-win, and it certainly makes ultimate good sense to not, you know, to, if we're going to have to put a temporary bridge in, and then to think of putting it back really doesn't make any sense, and it's really going to improve the circulation, will improve safety, will improve the art show areas. So I think this is a, an excellent idea, and we may not have to look at the dredge pipe anymore. So I, I certainly am fully supportive. Just a little historic note, the bikeway, it was a bike path, and it was sometime around 1976 when it was completed, 1977. I was a council member then. Gene Graffy was on the council, and the two of us broke the ribbon by riding bicycles through it. And it was clear from the first 30 seconds, there was no way that this was going to be a bikeway only. So, you know, and people get along out there. And, you know, and at the time, there weren't Surrys, there weren't skateboards, there are things have come along that have increased the traffic on it, but people do love to be, work closer to the water. So I, I think, as I said, I agree with Mr. Commissioner Bartlet, it's a win-win. Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Larson?
Although I don't think we're required to take an action that's formal today, I would ask, respectfully request that this go quickly to HLC so that we don't, and just keep it moving. So that's not in the form of a formal motion, but if I were making a motion, that would be in it. So I would ask that that be part of the direction. Thank you.
Does staff need anything further in the way of comments from the Planning Commission? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, we go on to item four, which is a new item. Application of Kevin DuMain architect for Janda Partners for 1085 Coast Village Road, limited commercial coastal overlay zones, general plan designation, commercial, medium, high residential. Yes, Commissioner Bartlet?
I will need to recuse myself on this item. This proposal is a work product of my office, so I will let the four of you continue on.
You are excused, Commissioner Bartlet. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. This report for this item will be given by
I think it was
by Julie Rodriguez.
All right, yes. Unfortunately, a couple of us are having a little, a little voice difficulty today.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The project before you is a request to make improvements to an existing Chevron service station. The project consists of additions to an existing 2,317 square foot service station, including a net increase of 263 square feet of floor area resulting from demolition of 344 square feet and construction of 700, 607 square feet. Conversion of the existing service base to retail area, a 1,667 square foot converted car wash tunnel, 135 square foot equipment enclosure, and a shade trellis for car wash detailing operations. Additional site improvements include converting an existing exploratory water well to a non- potable production well, installation of two paypoint kiosks for the car wash, relocating the the existing above-ground propane tank, restriping the parking for a total of 10 parking spaces on-site, a slight relocation of two driveway entrances, and removal, replacement of an existing jacaranda tree. Here's an aerial photo of the existing site circa 2008. As you can see, Coast Village Circle is to the east, Coast Village Road is to the north, the Hermosillo Road off-ramp is to the west, and Highway 101 is to the south. The proposed project relocates existing parking spaces to the southerly side of the property. The service station building will have a small addition to the front, the north side, and a new car wash tunnel at the rear, southerly side of the building. Cars will enter the car wash at the easterly property line where there will be one to two paypoint kiosks, which are located within the required 10-foot front setback. The cars with drivers inside would continue through the car wash tunnel to be washed and dried. When complete, cars would leave the property. There are a total of 10 parking spaces on-site for patrons of the service station, mini-market, and car wash. Two covered parking spaces are not counted in this total because they are to be used exclusively for auto detailing operations in conjunction with the car wash. The discretionary applications required for this project are: a modification to provide less than the 18 required parking spaces, a modification to allow two-point paypoint kiosks to be located within the required 10-foot front setback along Coast Village Circle, a conditional use permit for the conversion of an existing automobile service station to an automobile service station with mini-market, a conditional use permit for the car wash and auto detailing in the C1 Zone District, and a coastal development permit for the development in the coastal zone. One of the issues associated with the project is water. The project site currently receives potable water from the Montecito Water District and this would continue with the project. The project's non-potable water uses, such as car wash and landscaping, would be served by a new production well. An exploratory well was constructed in 2010. This well is proposed to be converted to a production well as part of the project. Teresa Lansley, the city's water resources specialist for the city, is available to discuss the well's permitting process. Another project issue is parking. Per the city zoning ordinance, the project requires a total of 18 parking spaces for the service station, mini-market, and car wash uses. A total of 10 parking spaces are proposed. A parking study was prepared by Associated Transportation Engineers and concludes that 10 spaces would satisfy the project's parking demand. This is primarily because each gas pump effectively serves as a parking space for many of the market's customers. Additionally, the car wash is automated, where the driver remains in the car and leaves as soon as the car emerges from the wash tunnel, so it does not require the parking typically required at a car wash. There are also two spaces provided for the auto detailing use. The Montecito Planning Commission held a courtesy review of this project on February 22nd, 2012. Their main concerns were regarding the adequacy of parking and circulation and potential impacts to the project by future projects along Highway 101. The Montecito Planning Commission also expressed concerns regarding the tower element being a location for larger signage that did not relate to the character of the village. Generally, the city's sign guidelines discourage signage that faces the freeway and encourages signage to relate to the main point of entry for the business. Signage will be reviewed by the sign committee as a separate project. The applicant also attended a meeting at the Montecito Association's Land Use Committee. They did submit a letter for planning commission consideration and that letter was forwarded to you by the Planning Commission Secretary. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the setback and parking modifications, the conditional use permits for both the automobile service station with mini-market and car wash with auto detailing use, and the coastal development permit for the project, the findings in Section 10 of the staff report as updated on March 13th, 2012, and subject to the conditions contained in Exhibit A as amended on March 13th, 2012. That concludes the presentation. Today, Stacy Wilson from Transportation Division is here to answer any questions that the commission may have regarding staff's review of the onsite parking and circulation-related issues. Also, Scott Shell of ATE is available to answer any questions related to the parking study. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. All right, this is time now for the applicant's presentation. You may have up to 15 minutes to make it and I'd like to remind the members of the audience that if there's anyone who wishes to speak to this item, if you would please fill out a request to speak form in the back of the room and give it to staff, then I will call on you after the applicant's presentation. Mr. DuMaine?
Good afternoon, Chairman Lodge and other members of the commission. I'm Kevin DuMaine, project architect with Design Arc. We have our owner, Bob Ullner, here, along with Aaron from Arcadia Studios. I'm Scott Shell from ATE. I'll try to go quickly through it. We had a very nice presentation by the city. Briefly, here's an outline of some of the community outreach efforts we've had on this project, you know, reaching out to the Coast Village Road business owners, the Montecito Association, the ABR, Montecito Planning Commission. Couple of pictures of our project site, you know, after a wetter winter. We were very fortunate in this location to have quite an extra wide parkway out in front of the station, which gives a much nicer landscape, you know, front yard of the project. In our site, you know, immediately adjacent to the freeway, we have the Hermosillo off-ramp right here. So the station serves quite a bit of, you know, Highway 101 traffic in addition to local customers. Coast Village Circle is a road right along here that parallels the street, so the back of our property matches the condition of the circle, so we have a similar setback to Here we are in aerial form. And we're fortunate to have quite a bit of existing landscape along the Caltrans strip that helps shelter the project from the freeway. Right way? Come on. Driving north on the freeway, this is your first glimpse of the station. Here you are, sort of a beam of the station. And now this is going southbound. You can see it from the other direction. And now if we get out onto the sidewalk of Coast Village Circle, we can start to see some of the other local connections. This is the underpass onto the freeway, down to the beach of Butterfly. Couple of images of our neighbors to the east on the south side of the street. Bank of America on the north side and the Bank of Montecito. So this is our parcel to start with. You know, it's a little different than most gas stations. The site's kind of elongated, skinny at the west end. The geometry sort of makes for some circulation issues which we've had to deal with and resolve. The existing building, it's just over 2,300 square feet. And then the lighter yellow is the fueling stations, for eight fueling stations there under the canopy. There's a propane service over towards the west end. And then there's the air and water up by the street and that's to remain. We have quite, you know, existing landscape on-site is 2,300 square feet and we also show the landscaping in the parkway and we hint at the landscaping along the Caltrans right-of-way. So, we have quite a bit of additional landscape that helps benefit this project. This is what we're going to start to do to the building. This piece here will have to be demolished and removed in order to create access for our future car wash. Car wash will be the sort of teal-colored piece and it'll be an addition on the back, but it's open air on the ends. Here we have the retail addition on the north side. Trash enclosure to the west. And then a little, difficult to see that, but right here we have a little storage enclosure on the back side. So this is our, the build-out of the building on the proposed site with the new parking. These are our improvements in the public right-of-way. Right here we have a new bus pad. Access, sort of the bus bench will be on the relocated sidewalk. This entrance driveway is being shifted over. Currently, it's between that line and this line. And on the suggestion of Tom Boullet, for site circulation concerns, we've gone and moved it to the west, which we'll see later, but it causes the relocation of that jacaranda tree over to here. Well, that jacaranda tree will be removed and replaced with a new tree. And then around the corner, since we're eliminating the parking stalls that are in the front yard setback and putting them against the building, we had to relocate this driveway entrance to the north a little bit. And so this is going to be some new sidewalk in here. The propane tank is going to move over to this corner where it can be more adequately screened from, with landscaping. The car wash, excuse me, the car detailing operation will be scaled down from what the current station has, so we're allowing two spaces for that and providing the shade trellis. And this location is the water well that will be providing the water for the car wash and the landscaping. Here we see the function of the car wash. Customers will arrive on the east side of the site, drive through the driveway here, and we have two locations for the kiosks. We want to get them both permitted now under this permit, but the plan would be to build this location and then if demand becomes great and as there starts to become delays, that we would add the second one in, but all the wiring would be intact. There's room for, you know, five cars to stack up before they enter the car wash here without being out on the tarmac. The cars will drive through this way. Will they be on the track? And there'll be an attendant here to get, make sure that each car gets safely onto the track and keeps the operation moving smoothly. Because of the geometry of the site, we didn't have the space to have like a vacuuming station at the end, so there won't be one in this operation. And then they can take off through this exit. Here we see the combination of all the parking on-site. The red stalls are the ones that are designated and meet the city zoning regulations. The yellow cars are the locations at the fueling stations and they're the primary customers for the mini, expanded mini-market. We'll be doing all the standard stormwater improvements on our property that you see on other projects. In addition, the car wash brings with it, you know, underground filtration tanks so that water involved in the car wash will be, you know, sediments will be removed and filtered and then what is discharged will be, is already pretreated before it goes into So our building, the existing structure is a rectangle approximately like this. So we'll be adding some retail space on the front and the trash at this end, car wash in the back. Here's that equipment yard and then an equipment room for the car wash. Customers will enter here. The idea is that all of this portion of the roof will remain, so the same height ridge, the same, this end of the building will be the same, we'll just extend the roof here. And then there's this raised portion of the roof that you saw on the story poles in the The roof plan. And then the car wash adjacent to the freeway, we're going to have a flat roof with parapets surrounding it. Parapet on this side would be a little taller so that would help, you know, screen any equipment that would be up on the roof from the street side. The freeway is down lower, so the sightlines are better. We can do, we can have a lower parapet on that side. We have really good exposure to have, you know, photovoltaic panels in the future. And then we can, on the south side of the tower, we have a place that we can put, you know, condensers, any equipment that's necessary for the refrigeration inside the store and it can be out of sight. So the current station, you know, fairly straightforward steel structure. And what we want to do is make it look more Santa Barbara-like. So these, this would be the north elevation facing Coast Village Road. The entrance would be here where we have the raised tower. There'd be a few windows over to the left. They would have sort of a tile base so that you could have displays and encounters on the back and not have the, all of the equipment showing through the glass. The cashier or office space would be here, so they'd have good visibility out to the pump island. The trash would be in this room here behind the wooden gates and you can see the exit to the car wash. The red line shows you the profile of the existing station. So we're maintaining all of this as existing roof and in the center here, we poke up a little bit. And down at this end, we actually, we lose some of the existing structure and replace it with this lower element. The east end, you know, this would be your entrance to the car wash. And here you can see how the parapet changes heights. On the freeway side, it's lower and on the north side, it's higher. The west end, similar story. Then to embellish the south side of the building, we've held it back from the edge of the freeway property line. We'd be planting it out with vines and we'd also be inserting a series of buttresses and that'd all be done in white plaster. And here's your freeway elevation. And once again, you can see a sense of the scale of the existing station relative to the proposed design. I'll have Aaron talk about the landscape.
I'm Aaron Carroll, landscape architect with Arcadia Studio. I've got about two minutes, so I'll make it fast. As you, as you go east on Coast Village Road, there's a lot of sycamores and pine trees and we're proposing to... Where's the pointer? Where's the laser pointer on here? Two new sycamores here and here to kind of repeat this rhythm of what's going on here. At the... Here, there's two triple trunk queen palms and we want to match those two and kind of repeat that rhythm along the sidewalk. So we're proposing a new queen palm there. New jacaranda to replace the existing. This is what we're proposing in the public parkway by the bus stop area, a low grass, native grass. We're proposing a low hedge along the sidewalk here to kind of give some separation between cars getting gas and pedestrians. At the entry, we were proposing three large Guadalupe fan palms of a significant height to start, to kind of really introduce the entry there. Some potted plants here near the outdoor seating area. Some small flowering sinetrees here. This is an existing... Where's the pointers? There's an existing jacaranda on Coast Village Circle. As the car wash, as you enter the car wash on the east As the car wash, as you enter the car wash on the southeast corner of the site, two new oak trees to kind of go with what's going on on the Caltrans side. Boston ivy between those buttresses on the south side of the car wash, and also another vine along that existing fence, Thumbergia vine. That would just cover that fence probably about six months. And some wisteria on the detailing trellis, and we're screening the propane tank with a tall ornamental grass, be about five feet there. And these are some of the other smaller plant materials we're using along the site, succulents, grasses, all low maintenance, water-friendly plants. And the irrigation system will be state-of-the-art equipment, comply with California AB 1881, all drip irrigation, so it seems a pretty sustainable landscape overall.
Thank you very much. We made it within the 15--
Scott Schell addressed the traffic, parking issues.
Mr. Dumein, it's been 15 minutes.
Much of this has been covered. I am Scott Schell with Associated Transportation Engineers. And Kevin, if you could just be the van for my slides, that would be great. So, we heard that the zoning ordinance requirement was 18 spaces, and we heard that we've got 10 spaces provided, but the studies show the majority of the customers that are coming to the convenience market really park at those gas pumps. So I think our study shows when you add it all together, we really do have 18 spaces for the uses. To verify the demands on the site, we looked at the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Parking Generation Report, and it has some new information published about a year ago on service stations with convenience markets. The demand analysis shows for this size and type of market, we would expect a demand of six spaces, and we have the 10 spaces provided, so the demand analysis sort of confirms that we have enough, if you go to the next slide. The last thing we did was to go out and actually field check and see what was out there in Santa Barbara. So, we have 11 service stations with a combination of car washes and convenience markets provided. The most recent one was the Field Depot project up on the Mesa, you might remember, recently approved and constructed. Similar story there, there was a zoning ordinance requirement of 18 spaces, a modification was granted for eight spaces. We can go down the line, and you can see that the various ones in town have four spaces, six spaces, up to seven spaces, and even a max of nine. We have 10 spaces, so this site has 10, and all of the other ones, 11 examples cited, have between nine and four. So I think we do have enough, and the studies show that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schell.
I believe that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Dumein. This is the time for public comment. I have four request-to-speak forms. The first person would be David Borgatello, and he will be followed by John Fraley? Franklin, I'm sorry. All right, Mr. Borgatello here? Yes, please, if you would come up and make your comments.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is David Borgatello, Vice President of Mar Borg Industries, and I'm not here to talk about trash today. Anyway, this car wash out in Montecito, it really has something unique for me because up on East Valley Road back in 1958, there was a really, a service station. Three fuel pumps, two lube bays, two bays for a repair shop, and one bay for car wash. Well, you know where my, they put me, 1958, in the car wash. And Montecito always should have had a super-duper car wash, and for some reason, there hasn't been one there. So myself, I am really in support of this car wash. I really think that the automated car wash is the way to go. There's different unique things I understand about this. Some of the water from the car wash will be recycled, and I just know that it, right here with the freeway next to the tunnel here, you don't have any residential homes right there or anything, what a place to have this automated car wash. So I really am in support of this. Mr. Yulner and Mr. Price here, they do a great job. Mr. Price has several other car washes in town. You can start out on Turnpike there and the freeway, you can go to Walnut Lane and Hollister. You go out to Fairview. Then my favorite one is on the corner of State and Ontare, and then you go up to the new one that he just got through building on State, rather, on Cliff Drive. So I'm in support of this. Also, he has come up with this, what they call pump flicks, where these are mounted on top of the pumps, and gives, people can actually have advertising on this, or when there's emergencies in the county or the city, it can be flashed over these, on this pure pump flicks. So I'm in support.
Thank you, Mr. Borgatello.
Thank you.
All right, John Franklin will be next, and he will be followed by, looks like Fred Hep.
Thank you for letting me appear before you.
Yes.
Sorry about the handwriting.
Few minutes.
My name is John Franklin, I'm a Summerlin resident and a native Santa Barbaraan, and a longtime customer of Coast Village Chevron. I've, excuse me, I've observed its ownership, that it takes great pride in its business operation, its customer service, and its place in the heart of the Montecito business community. I think it's important to note that this is not a Chevron USA-owned station. The owners are longtime residents of Santa Barbara. They have both a business and an individual stake in the community. They've been and continue to be actively involved in the Montecito business and civic issues. I've seen their renderings, as we all have, and I think they go well with Montecito and make what is already a modern and well-managed station look even better. The addition of a car wash will provide an additional service to the residents of Montecito and south that isn't presently available, and will thereby also provide a small traffic mitigation by taking those cars off the northbound freeway. For those reasons, I urge approval of this, and strongly in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Mr. Pep is next, and the last speaker is Hillary. I'm not having a very good time here figuring out the names. Newman, okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Hep.
My name is Fred Hep, I'm a Santa Barbara resident, a long time. I've been a customer of the owners, and I support the station. I think they do a terrific job, and I think this new thing is a real improvement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being so brief and concise. And Ms. Newman?
Hi, my name is Hillary Neiman, and I also am a longtime client of the Chevron station. I've been living in Montecito for about 12 years. And when I heard about the project, I was excited for three reasons. One being, I think the aesthetic of the building is beautiful, not only the architectural aesthetic, but also the landscape architecture that's being proposed. And two, I'm a big car wash person, and right now I have to go down to Milpiss, or more likely to downtown to get my car washed, unless I do the hand wash, which is sometimes a little bit too expensive for me. So I would be a big user of that car wash, and I think Montecito's in desperate need of something like that. And three, I think the owners of the station are outstanding individuals, they've got a lot of integrity and very honorable, committed citizens, and they also hire very nice people, and I think it's a great business for Montecito, and they would do a great job with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments from staff at this point? Okay, yes. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have a question for staff. On proposed condition of approval D1F, it talks about public improvements including relocating bus stop on Coast Village Circle. Could you explain what we are talking about as far as an MTD stop on Coast Village Circle? Because I thought there was only one on Coast Village Road.
Ms. DeBusschere?
Commissioner Thompson, that is a mistake, and it should be deleted from that particular condition.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just have a quick question, maybe Kevin can help me out. I just have this little tiny site plan. So, can you point out where on the plan is the water in the air?
Left-hand corner. Right here, and there's a little pad of concrete for that.
Okay.
So that's going to remain in place.
Thank you. And does that require parking per se as defined?
No, at this gas station, we've not put any parking places in front of it. Whereas around town, you'll oftentimes see a parking space.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Campanella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for staff. The sidewalk, or the walkway, pardon me, that comes from the building at about a 30-degree angle to Coast Village Circle. A question on that, is that a requirement of some type? My concern was, number one, it crosses where cars would be queuing for the car wash, and maybe may take out one queuing space, or may have some conflict with a person trying to cross there. The other concern was that it terminates right over a lid for a utility box, telephone box. And I know it's got a pattern on there to, you know, maybe prevent slip and fall, but actually somebody walking would be going downhill over that lid. So, those are my questions on the sidewalk.
Ms. Wilson?
Thank you. Commissioners, in terms of the sidewalk, that is, that was put, or requested, as a matter of making sure that there's as many pedestrian entrances to the site as possible. That seemed like the direct route, that's the way that we planned pedestrian facilities, and we think that there will be some foot traffic from Coast Village Circle to the mini mart. We, and there are non-slip tops that can be put on those utility boxes, and I guess I don't, I think you had a question more, so.
Just wondered if it interfered, in that particular spot, whether it interfered with the cars queuing to go into the car wash, whether enough room was provided to allow somebody to pass if there was a car stacked up that just came in the driveway.
Ms. Wilson?
Commissioner Campanella, I think that that's going to be an operational issue. I think we took a look at it on plan, but ultimately it's going to be the operation of the site to make sure, and the operators of the site to ensure that vehicles, if they were to queue, that they're not queuing over the sidewalk, because that's a ticketable offense, that they're respecting their neighbors that are using the sidewalks, and, you know, my experience is that they have a plan for that, and I think that that will end up being the case, and we would just, you know, ask that they look to that. But we, but they have arranged that there is room for pedestrians and vehicles to queue.
Thank you.
Chair Lodge and Commissioner Campanella.
Ms. DeBusschere?
Specifically related to the walkway that connects the sidewalk to the building, it is certainly possible that a car may be partially located in that at certain times, but we still think there's more benefit to providing the walkway than not.
We did receive a letter from the Montecito Association expressing some concern about the freeway landscaping on the freeway side, and concern that eventually the freeway will be widened and that there will be insufficient landscaping. Perhaps the landscape architect, or Marcadia, or Mr. Dumein?
In our current condition, there's a fence out along this edge, and it's all asphalt behind the existing station. So when the project gets built, we're going to be able to remove that existing fence and follow the true property line, which is back here, and so there'll be a bunch of space, as much as four to five feet in some locations, that'll be given back to Caltrans, which can be incorporated into a future landscape enhancement project along 101.
I'd just like to say, you know, as of today--
Excuse me, would you identify yourself for the record and speak directly--
Aaron Carroll, Landscape Architect. As the site is today, there's significant trees along the 101 easement, and I think you should review the project as it is today.
Chair Lodge and Commissioners--
Ms. DeBusschere?
We have not officially received Caltrans' plans for that improvement project. We're anticipating that they'll release an environmental document in the upcoming weeks, and that may include changes to the air moceo off-ramp, or possibly eliminating it, but at this point, we just don't know exactly what that will entail.
Okay, and I also raised a question about the placement of the ramp, the driveway, on Coast Village Circle and its proximity to Coast Village Road itself. I assume staff has looked at that and thinks it's okay. I was wondering if it, it did seem a little close to me also on the site visit, and I wondered if perhaps it would be a good idea to mark that as an entrance only.
Chair Lodge? The, that was reviewed, that being the relocation of the Coast Village Circle driveway to the north, slightly to the north, was reviewed by our traffic engineer, and we did some site visits associated with that. There were no concerns that were identified by the engineer, by the traffic engineer. We do have at our disposal the, what you have suggested, the keep clear markings, but because the traffic is, there's not that much traffic that's on Coast Village Circle, we don't anticipate needing to use that keep clear. And one of the things that the city, like Streets Division, does is to, to try to be as sparing as possible in terms of road signs and markings, just because of the maintenance involved. And the keep clear is actually a lot of paving or markings that add up over time. So we would keep that in our back pocket and be able to use that if there was a need for that in the future.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is it time for comments?
Certainly, yes.
Okay, as far as the project overall, I think it's a good project. The modification to provide less than the 18 required parking spaces, I think, is supportable. It's definitely logical from the standpoint of history and other stations in town, and it's supported by the ITE recent studies. As far as the modification to allow the kiosks in the setback, that's almost a non-event. The kiosks, if they're kept small enough and had a little bit of ivy growing on them, would blend in with the landscaping, you wouldn't even know that it wasn't a shrub, so I can definitely support that. As far as the conditional use permit for the conversion to a mini mart and the car wash, of all the locations that we've looked at for car washes in town, this is probably the one that has the least impact on the community, because you're not going to have a noise problem from nearby residents when the nearby resident is Highway 101, unlike some of the other sites that we've had to deal with. So I think it's the opportune time to do it, and I don't see any problems with the coastal development permit here, because certainly a service station is a visitor-serving element, so I think what's being proposed is a-- So I think what's being proposed is a definitely supportable project, and I would make the motion to approve it when the time comes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's a good project, and I can support the parking mod. But I really don't want to set any precedent by counting the places where cars fuel as parking spaces. I don't agree that they're parking spaces. We want people to pull forward, get done, and park their car and go in the mini mart, not park their car under a pump, at a pump. So I will support the parking mod, but I want that recognized that in the future, we don't count pumps, spots under pumps as parking. I'm really, I'm sorry to see the forced service base go, because I know there's very competent service there, but I understand the economics of it. I would ask that you be careful about signs in your windows, advertising. I know Mr. Price is very careful about these things, but if the ownership changes, that would be something that a new owner would need to be made aware. I would ask in the conditions of approval, I'm going to support this, but I would ask in the conditions of approval that there be, in terms of the pump flicks, a mute button on each pump. Not everybody wants to have the advertising. And I can promise you that in an emergency, when the, when the power goes down, the gas station won't be pumping, and it won't be broadcasting emergency information. And we have seen that condition happen on Cliff Drive before. So, not recently, but in the past. So I would ask that a mute button be put on the pump, because not everybody wants to, some people just like to pump their gas and get it over with and enjoy that moment, not necessarily have to listen to advertising. So, and I would also ask to have wherever, and I don't quite know how to phrase this, but graffiti-proof coating provided on the buttressing, on the south wall of the car wash, which would be, I know the vines will cover it over time, but in the meantime, to have that graffiti-proofing so that we don't accumulate a lot of unsolicited artwork. And so with that, I'm happy to support Commissioner Thompson's motion.
Any other comments? Mr. Campanella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'm in favor of the findings as Commissioner Thompson went through, plus I have a couple of comments. I think, you know, the ability to provide upgraded features to an existing facility is really a plus. And a lot of times, you know, you have to evaluate what use is going to be resulting from this improvement. And certainly, we heard from the speakers, and we can anticipate that a lot of use would be made. I think the ability to get your car washed in the same location that you're getting your gas is a real positive, and cut down on traffic trips overall to some degree in the area. I was out there today, this morning, and Caltrans had a crew, a survey crew, and I believe they're putting in a crosswalk and some handicap accessibility right on the exit from the freeway. And they're doing that up and down the freeway, they said, in order to enable pedestrians to get across roads where they might otherwise be interfered by exit traffic. So I think, if I was correctly interpreting what they're doing, it's a positive, because more foot traffic would be conducive to come over and use the facilities of the station as well, especially for convenience items that they might otherwise have to get in their car to go to. So I think a lot of positives about this, both from the aesthetic appearance and how it will serve the community, and I'm going to find in favor of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Campanella. I did have a question about the water well, and this is the first project that, since I've been on the Planning Commission, that's come forward with its own water supply. Montecito Water District will supply what they have supplied so far, but not one drop more, I understand. And so a well has been put in. Perhaps Mr. Vincent, you can explain, are there city policies about private wells and, you know, because it's obviously in the groundwater basin, it's another straw in the groundwater basin for what is also public water supply.
Well, Madam Chair, it's my understanding that this is not currently a city groundwater basin, that it's, that this particular location is not being pumped by, or is not supported by, a city well. And so this particular well would not have a conflict with an existing city well, because of its western, or its eastern, location within the city limits.
Thank you. All right. Well, we do have, I've made their comments, and I concur, this is an improvement, certainly aesthetically. It's going to be a lot better-looking building than what currently exists. We do have revised, Planning Commission draft, draft conditions of approval revised as of 3/13/12, and revised findings. And so the motion should be, that are dated 3/14/12. So Commissioner Thompson, would you refer to those? And then, did, Commissioner Larson has requested that there be a couple of additional conditions. One, that mute buttons be made part of the advertising display on the pumps, and that graffiti-proofing be placed, some kind of surface material, on the buttresses on the freeway side.
On the south wall.
The south wall of the, of the building. Commissioner Thompson, did you want to make those part of your motion?
Well, I'd move that the commission approve the project, making the findings as amended, and the conditions of approval in Exhibit A as amended, with the elimination in D1F to the MTD bus stop, and adding a condition to add a mute button on the pump speakers, if it's feasible. It might not be feasible.
I see Mr. Fell has come-
I just want to say, I've seen them in other places and used them in other states.
Yes.
Fell? I'm sorry, would you please-
I pressed the mute button on behalf of the project applicant.
Would you please identify yourself for the record?
My name is Doug Fell, with the law firm, Fell Marking. And there are several reasons that I don't think it's appropriate. The first and main reason is, this issue of a mute button was debated at great length at city council, and was ultimately not required, and was not included in the ordinance that allows the advertising on gasoline pumps. And it was specifically dropped. And in exchange, there were other restrictions, the sound level and things like that. And to, at this point, come back with a mute button on a particular project that goes directly against what city council voted on at 7:0, just doesn't, isn't acceptable to the owners of the station. The second issue relating to that same matter is, I have a real hard time finding a nexus between the approval of the project and the imposition of that condition. Right now, that station exists. It has pump flicks on the gas pumps. They exist, they're not new. We're not asking for something new. You'd just be, if you approved the project, you'd be only approving the new items, which would be the mini mart, and which would be the car wash. Now, neither of those items that you're approving have anything to do with the actual gas pumps, and how they operate, and what's on them. So what about your approval creates a nexus with a condition that you've got to put something on the gas pump that would act, to deactivate the pump flicks? And I just, I can't find it. I can't see how you could, in honest fairness, say, yes, we can put that, those two together. They don't go together. I mean, if we were asking to put in pump flicks today, okay, be brand-new, we're putting them in. Maybe you could find a nexus under those circumstances. But we're not asking for that. We're asking for other things that don't relate to pump flicks or the gas pumps at all. And so, on behalf of the applicant, I would request that you delete that condition, and we do not find it acceptable.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Thompson.
In answer to Mr. Fell's comments, it sounds like he's saying that it's not feasible, and that was part of my motion. But as far as the nexus, we're being asked to approve a conditional use permit for the conversion of an automobile service station. And as part of the condition of approval, I believe that there is a nexus. It's a discretionary approval. But if it's not feasible, then it's not feasible. So I, my motion stands.
Mr. Larson.
You know, when we, when we ask for modifications, sometimes there's a little trade-off we can ask for. And that was my motivation for asking. I'm not going to go into the comments I've heard about Netflix. I won't talk about my personal experience about hearing about four or five, four pumps at once, different times. I'm not going to do that. It's not a critique of Netflix. I was hoping that, that for people who don't desire to be advertised to, that they could have an option and enjoy the experience of coming to the station. That's all. I'm not debating about free speech or anything else. And Mr. Thompson is correct. I agree with him, that there, that there is, when we are changing use, there is a nexus, and it's okay to ask. I appreciate the comment. Thanks.
Mr. Vincent.
Mr. Vincent.
Well, Madam Chair, members of the commission, you are approving a conditional use permit, and the conditional use permit covers the operations of the gas station. The, and it's, you know, it's up to the commission to make its findings, how it can get to, how it can get to make the findings to approve the conditional use permit. And so, the, if the commission finds that this condition makes the use of, the proposed use of this site for a mini mart, a mini mart gas station appropriate, then that is for your findings to make.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
That was the reason that I said, if feasible. It's up to the applicant and the staff to work through it. And if it's not feasible, for myriad of reasons, it's not feasible. And so it's not, that's the reason why I didn't make it a hard and fast mandatory requirement.
Okay. And I just had a question about the condition regarding graffiti-proofing. I don't think there is proofing, actually. Is it graffiti-resistant?
I didn't include that.
Pardon me?
I did not include that in my motion.
You did not include that, okay. All right. So then the motion is to approve the updated findings, to make the updated findings, and to approve the conditions of approval with the addition of the, the addition of mute buttons on the advertising displays, if feasible. Does that correctly states it?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, and to correct the error about Coast Village Circle, the bus stop on Coast Village Circle. Any other comments, questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so ordered, unanimously approved. You have a project, and I believe it is approvable, appealable to the city council within 10 calendar days. Oh, my goodness. Good question. I don't recall who seconded it.
I had my finger poised, but that's okay.
To, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to second it, but I was going to comment about the graffiti proof. There is, there are, the landscape architect knows about these finishes. The architect knows that these finishes are available. I'm just asking for something that already exists to be applied, so that we don't have a cacophony of graffiti behind that building till it's covered by landscape. If you would like a good example of cacophony of painting, take a trip down the coast and have a look at some historic buildings by the, by the railroad tracks, and you will see plenty and see what goes on. It's completely covered with graffiti. And I'm just looking for ways to make it a little more difficult. Thank you, John. John says, yes, okay. So I won't belabor it. You got your second. You got my wish for my, if I ever lose another tooth, to have a mute button on the thing, so I'll second.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry that I-
That's okay.
My apologies for not having noted that, the absence of the second. All right. That then concludes that item, and brings us to Item 5, the administrative agenda, committee and liaison reports. First one is the staff hearing officer liaison report. Commissioner Larson.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I attended the staff hearing officer meeting, and there was actually an applicant who removed a second story on a constrained lot to bring it into, into more, to less modification. I thought that was outstanding. So we had, we, the meeting was not very long, of course, and, and the modifications were approved. They were minor in nature. I also attended the HLC meeting, all but the last item. And the HLC meeting was, was very interesting, it always is. They looked at the electric vehicle charging stations and talked about the type of, the style that that would take, an EPV. And also, the Dal Pozo Building, which was Montecito Motors, but it's now going to be a different business, converting to office use. So that, that's another interesting, another interesting structure to watch. That was built in two phases, from 1910 to 1921. So that was, that's a real sweet building. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee and liaison reports? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Bartlett and I attended a SEQA workshop, along with quite a few members of staff. And I have the book that they gave out there, which covers the entire workshop, which principally covered the recent changes in decision, legal decisions that affect the application of SEQUA. So if anybody would like to borrow it and read through it, you're welcome to borrow it. Second point, Commissioner Campanella and I attended this week's Single Family Design Board meeting. There were four projects reviewed, none of which are going to be coming to Planning Commission, and nothing of particular interest to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campanella has something to add to that.
Yeah, as far as the Single Family Design Board, it was nice to meet everyone and to see them operating. Just to note, they did have cookies and cake at their meeting. No hints here, but it's pretty, very nice of them to have that. And I think that, no, it's, from my vantage point, it's good to see what might be coming up, their thought process, and also what might be coming before us. I also attended the SEQA update meeting, and of interest in the, the actual SEQA book that they handed out, you could buy for $10, was, they went over all the recent cases in the last year, which I think is primarily the, yeah, the Association of Environmental-
My apologies to Commissioner Campanella, not including him that he was there.
That's okay. I was pretty quiet at that meeting. Association of Environmental Professionals, they had a SEQA update, where all the references are in there, that's- are in there, that's great. They went over all the cases that are of interest, as you can see in the book summarized, and what was really good was they went through the, what that meant. And a number of cases which surprised me, and may not surprise Mr. Vincent, even though there was a ruling, it, it says, well, maybe you really can't use that as a precedent, because, well, the defense really wasn't that good, or, you know, somebody picked a certain point, because somebody didn't do something, and you say, okay, well, is it something to follow, or is it not something to follow? So you just have to be aware, because I've, I heard and just reading little news blips, that, hey, you know, you don't have to do this now, you don't have to do that. But that's, you have to look deeper than that, because of the, the fact that there's certain circumstances of a particular case that may have come up with that decision that may not be applicable if you want to move forward. And then, let's see, oh, Chair Schwartz and I attended the Downtown Parking Committee session, she's the liaison on the alternate, we, we attended it. They were going through, it was their 2012 retreat, which is very interesting, because they were looking at what major points they should be addressing going forward. And they had a SWOT analysis, which was strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, and it's on their website if you want to see it. It's really interesting, because they're looking at, what are they doing good, what they, what could they do better, et cetera? And we were there for that part of the kickoff prior to, and asked questions about it, and puts, you know, they modified the priorities a little bit, and then they went into working groups, the engineering department, advertising, signage, you know, things like that. They broke it down into three web, web, three task groups to work on these items going for, and then come up with suggestions. I didn't stay for that, but it was very interesting seeing what they were doing. I also asked, just based, there was a comment made relative to the joint meeting that we had with City Council on the plan, and I, I just brought up to them that they might be interested, you know, as we go forward and we're talking about implementation, that that's one group that, you know, a number of issues that we have really should be participating and at the table to give their advice, I think, as we go through implementation policies. And they were very, you know, seemed very open to do that. Next week, I'm going to the League of California Cities, is having a Planters Institute, which you may have all been at previously, this, I'm going for the first time. And this would be where it's, with the city's help, going to this conference to meet with other planning commissioners and go through topics of the day. SEQA, your own, how to conduct yourself, but also looking at new sustainable cities and policies, and as a planning commissioner, besides just being at a meeting, what else should you be thinking about? What else should be doing, or what else should you not be doing, relative to the community? So this is, I'm very happy that I was told about this and helped by the city, and I'll report back if anything I hear that's of interest to everyone. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you all for your informative reports, and I look forward to hearing your report about the workshop that you will be attending, Commissioner Campanella. Well, if there are no other reports, that concludes the Planning Commission meeting, and the meeting is adjourned.